Guys, six thirty eight P M. This wonderful September fifth, we're gonna get this meeting called order.
Right to me?
Yep.
Okay, alright.
Toughest job I've had.
We have a slideshow for you here where you're gonna talk about fun balance. I can slideshow tab. This is a abbreviated version of what you saw in June when we talked about this this conversation. But it builds on where we think we left that conversation and then some of the steps we're gonna need to take looking to where we're going. I will highlight there are four sets of documents that are available to the public online. But we emailed to all of you that are models. We're gonna reference them tonight. I'm not gonna put them on the screen. Many of those Excel sheets are multiple tabs that are like actuarial reports for the risk studies. So I want you to just be where we have those and then people can find them online.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You wanna ask questions as we go along?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
So I'll explain what we think we're gonna do and then you're gonna tell us what you need to have filled in around those spaces. We're just gonna go quickly over the discussion points that we ended our last meeting at and sort of recap where staff believe the direction was given. When we don't have it fully yet. And we're gonna refresh the key items that we talked about in June. I'll just give you that jog memory that what we need to talk about today. Fun balance status, the current policy, the challenges within the language of it, and then, you know, whether or not we move to a much more expansive model. Reserves as an insurance model and reserves as a savings model. We talked about those two fundamental themes last time. Then out of that are discussion points and Dr. Peoples, I added these. They really surmise the two points, the two slides at the end where we're asking you for all that feedback is. How start thinking about a data informed policy? I'll give you an example. We may think forty percent of the budget sounds like a really low number to have. But what if the data says only ten percent of the budget can be saved, you know, for a revenue loss, right? So how do we overcome the human decision making and our own risk aversion and our own loss factors and such? Really use the data. So how do you prepare yourself for that? And you don't have to follow the data either. You can make other decisions as policymakers. And then we're going to have extra reserve funds beyond what the city needs. We would be like we would be triple insured probably. You know, if we if we kept all that we have in the sense of a reserve for those fundamental functions. So what do we do with those extra reserve funds? The reason that last time council member you talked to your sort of that language between what's the fund balance, what's the reserve? And do we really? We have reserves now. We do, but technically reserves mean you reserved it for something. We have never as a city said, this big pot of money is reserved for. Right? And that's that's one of the questions we're gonna ask. Where does that go? You know, where does where does one time money, a lot of one time money, get invested on behalf of the city? So that kind of question, you don't have to answer that tonight. That's the sort of questions that we're posing with this conversation as well. Because when you talk about fun balance policy, you're also talking about what's the appropriate amount to keep on cash on hand versus what you're taxing and operating. Okay? Councilman Smith, questions yet?
Not yet.
Okay. So this is where we ended our conversation last time. And so these orange are what we think are staff directions that we what we surmise from your conversations. We talked about the G F O A rethinking model. You said yes, and it sounds appropriate for us. That's what we took away as direction. If we are wrong on what direction is, please tell us and we will, we can pivot on that regard. We talked about a risk based revenue analysis, that that tool, using the tools to do an actual data dive on our exposure. You sounded, we inferred that you agreed with that model to do that that kind of a process.
To your knowledge, have we overhead any type of risk based review? Anything pertaining to insurance or risk or?
Yeah, yes. So we do have.
Facilities.
We do have risk analyses that come through. They do walk through and they do workers comp risk analyses or a liability analysis. So the insurance company does come through, you know, this piece of park equipment looks like it could have a screw sticking up that can cause cuts and injuries and things like that. They have done a lot of that. We've been looking at that, especially with workers comp. I think looking at auto liability now and where those rates have gone, we certainly it's incumbent on us to look at some of those. But we've never done it on the revenue side. What happens when the bad thing happens in Webster Grove, right? What is the bad thing? What are we? What's the probable bad thing on all of this to bad things that could happen? And how do we weather that storm, whether it be an actual storm or something else when it comes?
Well, with that, risk analysis also include, we have. Piece of equipment A. It's been working fine, but his. Amortize off the books, pass his life cycle. And we carry some type of insurance on it in case something happens. Is it cheaper to carry insurance or is it cheaper just to buy it when it break down?
Buy it when?
Yeah.
I don't think we had that that kind of, the numbers have been playing on back of the envelope math until this year that it didn't matter. It was just cheaper to keep the insurance, right, to be able to repurchase that product through an insurance claim and such. Now with the changes in our insurance liabilities, the claims and deductions, now that's a bigger question. Is there worth, you know, a truck that will probably get fifteen thousand for having to deal with the multi thousand dollar claim? And then a massive deductible? Do we just avoid insurance on it altogether?
Cause part of revenue is can we decrease any of our expenses to bolster revenue by what we don't need? This limit of. Insurance on this particular piece of equipment. Maybe we drop it. If we need it, just increase it to a point where the deductible is. Decreasing the cost of our insurance.
Can you remind the group and for people watching what our deductibles increased to? So it really did change how we do things.
It did change. So I mean, light vehicles, I believe, went to almost, almost fifteen thousand dollars. Light vehicle. So we're talking just a basic car, truck, fifteen thousand dollar deductible. Of course, you know, most or household policies were paying thousands. Some was pay five hundred. Some people maybe pay two thousand. I know exactly what you're talking about. It's, you know, if we don't need the coverage, let's pull it down. Our whole policy, so you know, overall, essentially what happened to the city and happened to all the members of Slate was deductibles all went up. Premiums all went up. The. Value of our vehicles still is going up and such. All of our claim coverage just came down. So to make it somewhat affordable, Slate gave us less insurance with more of our own cost kicked into that insurance to be able to do that. And essentially, in some ways, some of this, I I believe, my words falls on Slate for not every year giving us a little bite of that increase. And we've held it, I held it back. And now it's come due because the Chubb and the other insurers that do play in the the public sector market aren't going to wait for us to get. Caught up like that on a slow process, but also part of it is just simply, you know, a lot of different factors. And there are weather changes, hail damage on cars and such, just with weather changes has caused more claims and roofs and things like that. They are our commercial vehicles. This is the one that just got me that like, so we're talking about the big fire truck here, right? Or a dump truck and such, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deductible. For for a for a dump truck, that's almost a dump. That's almost, almost fully pledged out. Every bell and whistle, you can make up dump truck for Webster Grove. And so that is now a deductible on a on a large commercial vehicle. Now that's our dump trucks. It's gonna be the fire fire engine. Certainly, that's still is less than the cost of the engines, but ambulance, you don't know. Is that valuable? Is the is the new ambulance, if it gets bumped up, is it really? For a hundred thousand dollar mortgage, we just get another new ambulance at some point, so.
It's something we could consider the reserve balance.
Absolutely. Yes. Yep.
And not to do too much on insurance, because I know we have others to talk about too. But how does it like, do we pay per vehicle? Do we pay as like an overall amount to see that encompass?
We pay an overall amount for the city that encompasses all things, but there's all on a property listing. So we are, we list every vehicle that we have and we by practicing and by good, good reason include every vehicle. Even the couple of cars that maybe move a couple of times a month at most are small trucks. But all of them that touch a road are all insured. And you've got the sort of off road vehicles, tractors and such like that at public works. They're all included. All of our facilities are included in that package. And then you're dealing with also workers comp is coming through there, a liability for public and such, you know, sidewalk trips and things like that, so.
So if we take like this one doesn't need replacement coverage and this one does, does that actually change our overall cost very much or?
It could. It can reduce the number of claimed vehicles and such. But again, there's there comes a tipping point where you're not getting any value out of that or you are, you know, and so. Or you may have to remove so many that you can't get that many to take off the list, right? Some of that is, I wish Slate was a little more open about the formula, you know what I mean? It's not like I can just go get it and tell you exactly like, we pulled this out, it'll give us this. It's you sort of have to piece out what's the pricing formula and how's this work? What do you do with this list we send you to come up with that number at the end?
Must we use Slate?
So we must use Slate unless you're gonna willing to forego what we have invested in the trust there. We have above four hundred thousand, I think, in property.
Well, that was in twenty two, so I'm sure it's increased significantly. At that time, if we were to leave Slate, we would be foregoing four hundred thirty five thousand, if I remember correctly.
There's a property trust and a health trust, just to be clear on that. It's like, there's two different sides of Slate. So. We've been in property with Slate for many years. Health is the recent addition Slate. So as we do a risk based analysis, you look at revenue, you look at all the possibilities and all the different things that come out of that, including in your spending. So to the fleet, like what's your replacement plan, you know, in ten years, we're gonna need to buy a fire truck. So that's built into all this already. What are you? Do you go with a range of required reserves? Many of our counterparts have. We wanna have between ten percent to twenty percent of the budget. We wanna have between three million dollars and five million dollars. You can have different values there. Or do we have a fixed target like we have? We wanna be at fifty percent of the of the general fund budget on our current policy. We didn't get an answer to that because I didn't expect to get an answer on that. That's part of this, what the tool is gonna tell us. But these are the data points to start thinking about, right? If it says ten percent, but you're like, I don't think I can tell my neighbor that we only need ten percent. It sounds credible, right? You know, those are the kinds of things that we need to think about in applying data to policy conversations as well. And then is there a minimum and maximum? You know, so if we have a twenty two million dollar budget in the general fund like we have now, and we have thirteen million dollars sitting in the fund balance of the general fund. Well over, you know, almost sixty percent of the of the budget and such, sixty five, sixty four percent this year. Is there a maximum number that starts to trigger? Now you go into a spending plan or you go into a diversion plan to pull out of that and get it into a reserve for a certain purpose? And then you've hit a floor, you hit a minimum, all of a sudden you're going below. What's the what's the refill triggers that go into that, right? Do we want those triggers or is it just simply like we have it now? Somebody come up with a plan. That's pretty much what it is now. Who's gonna come up with a plan? Fix it, so.
But that can be part of the annual budget.
Can be part of the annual budget, yes. That if you, yes, so off, but again, I think what we talked about, one of the visions of the G F O A conversation is to predetermine a lot of those triggers and outcomes. So you know where it's going. So you're not caught in the emotional moment of there's loss happening, right? Economy's downturned and such. We're gonna go, we need to go over here, right? And you pivot the whole organization, right? There's a there's a plan built behind, theoretically built to the strategic plan and all those, the conversations of where investments need to happen. But plans are written down for a reason, so they can be changed if they need, so. Number three, then we talked about comprehensive reserve policy. This sort of speaks to what we just talked about. You said, yes, we should do that. And these are some of the big policy conversations. We talked about a rainy day fund. That's again, the rate, most rainy day funds have the trigger, so we're gonna hold this amount of money. If revenue dips by this amount, we're gonna dig into that rainy day fund type of thing. Some rainy day funds don't have a trigger. Some of them are just like ours. They just exist. You guys decide when you need to take them out and use it, so. Take money out of it. And then the last one is, where do we see reserve going? So if we have these extra reserves that we don't need to hold for covering our risk, where are we gonna put that money, right? Or does we, do we just sit and invest it? That's it. Now you can do that, but if you want to do investments and things, what are those things that you're working towards? And because we have to motivate a community engagement, you know, plan for those things and identify those areas. And are they just the strategic plan or is it other areas? So that's where we think we left staff direction at our our June meeting. Okay?
So Eric, I believe we have prioritization coming up in one of the. Work session meetings where councils kinda talk about priorities. We're gonna discuss what we're at with strategic plan as well as Eric just said. For me, that really goes to number three. And so perhaps that question waits until after a prioritization conversation. But there's a lot of big ticket items right now on the horizon, whether it's stormwater, doing more with sustainability. Art discussion that we had this week. There's just a lot of big things that are important to the community and to council. And so how do they play into this? We'll see what recommendations come from the comprehensive plan too. That might be. Oh, it's a whole other set of monies. Absolutely.
So just to take you back, our fund balance, right now, we, the final numbers that we had to do a real quick recalc, recalculate were about sixty four and a half percent. Once we went the adopted budget for this year. So we have a very strong and healthy fund balance, our monies in the general fund that aren't budgeted. Remember, fund balance is everything that's left over in the general fund that isn't part of the budget. So we have well over, well over, or almost fourteen million dollars just there in the fund balance. The unassigned portion, that really the piece that you, I guess I get to play with, but has sort of discretionary free use right now is about eleven and a half million. And so and some of those funds will become more discretionary as they they loosen up, you know, I mean, that's. You wait for the final ARPA certification to come back and then you've got all your revenue losses, you know, released. And so you can say it's all revenue loss and there you go. So little things like that, that number will grow and it'll change as we go through quarterly reports. But you've got a lot of funds still saved. Essentially, we talked about, we sold the water system for twelve million dollars. That money went into that fund balance. It's pretty much still there. Pretty much have that still there and available. Almost twenty years later, I suppose, is it ten?
I think it's twenty one, twenty one, back to two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one, so. So we have, we have a good chunk of that money. We've replenished a few little bits of it here and there. We've taken out of it in the in the bad years as well. But we have a strong chunk of that principle that still remain, if not all of it. So we talked about our current policy. If you remember, say targets, it's not a requirement. We're supposed to try to have a goal of fifty percent, but it's not a requirement. So if we fall below that, we don't fix it. What's the, there's a penalty, you know, it doesn't do anything. It just. Below fifty percent. Doesn't have to be a requirement or a penalty either. I'm just saying it's, you know, is it gonna be a target or a requirement? What's our conversation? The rolling beginning balance is what they used when they wrote the current policy. And remember, we talked about how hard that is to do because you have to take all the estimates for the current year you're in at about six months through. And then you're constantly reworking that estimate to give you where you're gonna start your budget you're from. And then as you make changes to the budget, you're making changes on that side of that balance sheet as well, so. So that's a, that's a tough number to use. Understandably why they wanted to use it. What are we gonna start this budget at? It's below fifty percent. Get it? But it's real tough because you have so few data to really help you out on the on the current year.
What are other options of numbers they could pick?
You can go to a closing year balance. You can, you could look at the same thing if you, I think really what it is is we, you're giving right now estimation power. It's really what Maria and I do. We estimate what the end of the year, departments give us their first estimates, then we look at those estimates. In January, when they open the budget, into March, when they submit their budgets, what do you expect to do in that fiscal year for the remaining few months? You know, what you've done and what you expect to do, what's that total gonna be? And that's driven by, that's put in by departments. We review it for credibility and such. But it's also, those are just, those sometimes are numbers that you don't know what's going to happen, right? And so is there a better way to build in what those estimates look like on the backside? You know, is there, is there an actual formula to estimation that we should be using in standard practice? We haven't done that. Departments have different ways of estimating what they're gonna be. And everyone just assumes they're gonna spend their salary. And we always have salary savings. You know, you just have people that are changing over, right? And so you always have a saving there that adds to the fund balance, which is good for the city. But ultimately, it does, it gives you, doesn't give you the truest picture of what you actually have available on the table. If we were a much tighter cash organization, it would be really important for cash flow, right? This, we've never had to do a cash flow analysis here, ever. We'd never have to worry about it. We have enough money in the bank, got any check we need right now today. And so, but if we were a tighter organization, if we do spend this down, we have to start looking at that. When do funds come in? How do we hold monies? How do we borrow from one fund that's got money now because it's a property tax fund? Waiting for the big sales tax months to come in for this other fund, right? And that's, that's what other cities do to balance those funds out, so.
Based on your experience in city management, we have already. Councils have. Made. That. Fund balance is part of their budgetary. We don't want the fund balance to go beyond below this. And when you start looking at expenses and revenues for the current year. You say, okay, if we spend this much, we're not going to achieve this fund balance.
So every city, every city that is gonna do bonding is gonna have a fund balance policy. Because you're, you're gonna end up on the bottom end of a Moody's or a S and P standard rankings with with nothing, with no rating. If you're not, with a bad rating, excuse me, if you don't have those kind of policies. It's why when we did, before we did the twenty eleven bonds for the concrete roads, that's when most of these policies were reviewing, were first implemented. They were brought in because, okay, we, we're gonna take a big debt package out. We need to be better rated, get the best deal we can. And so that's where a lot of this came from. We look at the years of these.
But they just used them nowhere they had.
I think they use a lot of comparables around us. There's a lot of fifty percent around us here. And there aren't, but there are hard requirements in some cities. I think of like DePere, I think is one of them that is fifty, like us, their goal is fifty. I think they're well over seventy. But their minimum, their bottom minimum is thirty five, which still is a lot of money. And that city could run for many months, around that thirty five percent. But they have to do some drastic changes. There's a trigger there that requires, you know, it's understood, this is a policy of the city. And this triggers hit, these steps are gonna happen. And actually, that's really what a risk, the risk analysis that we're talking about gives us as well. If you have, when you look at those documents and you all can open up, you can modify them, you can play with them. But it's gonna look at what happens if we're, if we're in an earthquake area and we get the big one, right? And we have to go to continuity of operations. This building doesn't exist. We've gotta move buildings. What's those costs going to be? What do we move? What do we need to cover that kind of action, that kind of cost? What's insurance kicking in? Or are we not? So that gives you a better sense of what that number is. It's not just a guess. It's literally an actuarial type of table that is being applied there, so. The other thing about our policy, it just says the city will fix it in the budget proposal. Well, the budget proposal is the city manager, but she's not the city. The city is all of you, so.
Absolutely. Put down a T shirt.
This policy says we're supposed to review it every two years, which we do through the budget process. We all know this. We look at this number, but the policy itself is every two years and then. But we review everyone else. It's when the three year rolling cycle, these reviews. So those are the problems with our current policy that we talked about last time, just to give you that backstop. Why don't we just keep doing what we're doing? Even if we wanna do that fifty percent number, there's some other things we have to fix within that to sort of give us better direction. And also to understand your role as the legislative body, what's your powers and what's the management's powers to be able to manage the budget once, once delivered.
Have you ever wondered like biennial means once every two years and not twice a year?
Biennial?
Okay.
And city council will be your state auditor.
The English language.
So glad we are talking about it.
Exactly. This, this, this conversation gives me anxiety, so.
So I understand that, so. So as one who deals with insurance, here we go, let's talk about insurance, so. So again, risk based revenue analysis, what do we need for extreme events? Revenue stability for when we have expenditure volatility, when prices shoot up with in in inflationary times? What do we have to do? What do we need for leverage? What's our liquidity? What's other funds needs in there? What's our growth? What's our projected growth? I mean, that's a piece of this, right? We don't talk about where our projected growth is. I know I've mentioned it every time we do property taxes that we didn't grow enough, in my opinion. But, you know, that's a conversation. And then what's our capital? You know, at some point, if we need a new building, how do we fund that, right? How do we take care of that? And it's, you know, we rely on debt service. But if we're, if we have to do debt service because of a major event, and now you need another building, building after you get that done, how do you get to that point, right? And what do you need on that?
It's all data driven information.
Look, it can be data driven information. So I wanna be clear about that. We can give you data, give you out of that numbers, here's what we think that data is showing us. But again, elected officials aren't bound to say we have, we have to follow the data. Data isn't there to guide you, but if data is not meeting the community value or the community comfort, that is not a, that doesn't hold you to that, right? But there are competing emphasises there, right? You wanna be a data driven model, you wanna be a much more values driven model. And how do you find what they call the Goldilocks zone? When you look at the G F O A slides that I sent out today, between those two models, right? What feels right and what the data tells us we need to have, right?
Okay, so like DePere has a fifty percent.
Just like we do.
Okay. And like, I guess I'm just like wondering, like, that is taxpayer dollars. Those are taxpayer dollars. And but that, their community is comfortable with keeping on hand, that's like a, like a blanket, like a cozy thing.
I think you can honestly say that a community is comfortable if you will say that in their ignorance of that whole issue.
Right.
That they're comfortable. I don't know, no one goes out and spends a whole campaign on how much money you have in the bank. Until someone finds out you have all this money in the bank and you just raise taxes, right? That's usually when these kinds of issues come up, the political sense, but. How many of you campaigned that we have thirteen million dollars in the bank? We need to keep it there, right? You know, I mean, that that's never the, that's usually not the conversation for all the people. So I don't disagree with you when I'm saying, what's the reason that they, have they really endorsed that? Or is it simply the byproduct of the community they are? That's what I get.
Well, municipal government philosophy has changed. And we're doing many more, whether social activities, getting engaged in different areas. And so, but the tide has really shifted in terms of how do we invest back in the community beyond basic streets and infrastructure, which is of course is incredibly important. But we're thinking about other things as well.
I'm curious about that historically, just like. When those types of shifts happen, just. I've been listening to a lot of like planning for streets and stuff. Podcasting out this level of investment and discussion of investment back into infrastructure hasn't happened really since the post World War Two era.
Well, in post World War Two area, era, we're building new infrastructure, right?
Yeah.
Building, well, for some reason, building a new bridge, building a new freight road gets a lot of fanfare, but fixing the most basic road, right? A chip shield doesn't, we don't all run out press releases that the chip shield program, right? Right, yeah, right. So but my point being is that we've always in this country had a problem with what do we do with the next round of infrastructure that comes behind the big thing we built?
Yeah.
So as we've expanded cities, then of course you start to see the housing market move with them. How you got infill housing happening? Does it, does it happen at the same rate it happened in nineteen forty seven, you know, on the edge of St. Louis city as people moved out? Right? So you, you constantly had that conversation across many, not just public infrastructure, but our housing market and other, other investments. So in here, the, on the reason, as an insurance model, this could also give you the range. What's your, what do you really expect? You know, if you have that, those extreme events pack up, here's what do we think you should have on hand? You're gonna have none of them? Here's your minimum, you know, is it ten percent, is it twelve percent? Is it a whole dollar number? The floor of your, of a possible policy. And again, human fear of loss, you know, again, what you're just talking about, council member, forty percent feels like the right number to be. We've never, ever, 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 ever in this city, even before we had this twelve million dollars, gone anywhere close to forty percent. Out of the, out of the fund balance. You know, I mean, we have been able to hold a much larger number. We've never drawn down that kind of money, you know, and such. Now that's many years ago on budgets, but you just go back and look and it's, you know, we've always had revenue to meet it. Even in the tough years, we've made the changes, you know, that you're gonna make so that you're not drawing down massive amounts of millions. It's usually, again, you look at most cities, ten, twelve percent are probably easily justified even in running. We think of twenty nine, we think of, you know, great crashes and time, but it's, the government has a generally revenue, a pretty good stable stream. We're a little more sales tax dependent than we probably would like to be, a little more volatility, but people still need to buy stuff ultimately. And we're a residential community where people are gonna buy stuff. They gotta have toilet paper, they gotta have, you know, sundries and such like that, so. There's groceries, stay in the sales tax base. Legislature changes the sales tax base, that's a risk. Like, that's something we would analyze in this, this conversation about revenue tax base. Whether the, the outside influences of the legislature changing the tax base. As they said, we had to lower tax rates by, you know, ten percent. What would that do for property taxes? It relates to a lot of homeowners, but it would cause, you know, what's the revenue shift that we would have to deal with here?
Well, and that's not a, that wouldn't be a surprise actually with this. I mean, if they get their act together and actually concentrate on certain things at the.
I, I think it's probably our actual most legitimate threat to revenue is the legislature and preemption by the legislature.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think our biggest threat is always from without, from outside than within.
I think number two is with them. I get to housing and building there. So I, I look at, again, I come back, this is me, Eric Peterson, but I come back to our commercial growth, right? How do we, commercial value and our commercial real estate is where, you know, is so much more valuable. A smaller piece of commercial real estate is so much more valuable than a home because of the tax rate, because of the value of commercial property. But we haven't built any commercial property. In five years in a row, only one year, one, one of the three business districts got a commercial net new construction. Everything else has been residential in this city. So we're not building commercial value and that's, I'm not arguing against the historic buildings one bit whatsoever. But you have a small dense area, so are you building up? What are you building to give yourself more commercial room? What do you need for commercial room? You don't probably have to have a big bank the way we used to have it, but what is it? Is it, is it an office working space, a co-working space? What is that thing? And those commercial spaces are where we will make our bread and butter if we're not going to change the housing model.
Well, isn't, isn't the, the sales tax platform in St. Louis county based also on the fact that other municipalities are building new? Then we're gonna be okay as well? Cause we share.
By population. By population. So we all, so we, that's based on the population, the per capita populations of each, of each municipality based on the decennial census. So we, we had some, we had a growth in this last decennial census. You know, we had some years of a couple of censuses that we went down, but in general, we've. You know, we had some years of a couple of censuses that we went down, but in general, we mapped right along with the rest of the county up and down, right? So we're not seeing that area where if we jumped ahead by an extra five percent, the pool would, you know, because now we have that kind of population.
I, I think I see what you're saying and maybe I misstated what I was trying to say. I was just, effectively, I don't see this community increasing population at any significant speed, uh, in, in the near future. And I think that's always been the argument is, well, if we don't have commercial, then we just increase population. I just don't see that happening. Um, particularly because we're a black city. It's obviously we went through Douglas, uh, Douglas Hill. It's difficult to build uh, in this community, um, significant, uh, multi-family units. So you're saying, in other words, if we're gonna, if we're gonna increase our tax revenue, the best way of doing that is through commercial?
Short of, short of going more sales taxes. So, I mean, sales tax, we certainly are a rich factor in the city.
Or increasing property tax.
Or yes, increasing property. If you're not gonna increase the rates and such, your net new construction of commercial value gives you so much more bang for the buck. You get more money per, you'll get a value per acre. Take your parcels out of it. We took the, and actually I would like to have this modeling done, but if we took the property taxes and got rid of the parcels and laid that down, but what does it give us per acre? You hear this a lot from organizations like Strong Towns and other, other places. They talk about land use. Value per acre then starts showing you where's your, where's your, your real property tax base coming out of? The dense areas with higher values and that. Of course, that's gonna be your commercial district areas, right? And so those areas that are already dense and all that, that kind of infrastructure started being built in. How do we then net new construction in that? How do you add new buildings in that? Like I'm waiting to see fifty-five West Moody, the old bank drive-through be built because that will be some of the first net new construction we'll see. Since my time here and I think for a few years before that.
The property, the one property that you mentioned, there, there was one property.
There was one, um, uh, well, Schnucks got a, a big net new construction because they're increased, their, their whole new renovation throughout the building. Um, they had a big assessment, but there was a, um, there was my tummy. I'm so sorry. Telly tire, Telly tire and old orchard. So when that shifted, that was considered a new construction because of the, the shift of the type of business and such. And it really, it really did change. That, that was a big jump on the tax base there, um, that, that came through.
And they moved their corporate offices.
They did, yeah. So.
But we still face with our community. Still want this to be the nice point. Drive-through community and we want all the other things that everybody else have, but we don't want to increase business and we don't want to increase taxes and.
Housing.
How, you know, who's ever gonna stay like where we are and, and get nothing. It's going back to your point. And, and you have to have that, that business, uh, growth in order to truly move and business growth to bring in people. If there's nothing to live here, to bring in, uh, taxing costs into the area.
So fear of human loss, again, forty percent, is it too much? Too little? We don't know yet. Well, the data will help us, but it, get yourself prepared for that conversation, right? I mean, you know, I can go tell my, my neighbors that thirty percent is enough, but what if it's twelve percent? Can you even say that? You know, and, and much less bring it back. I don't mean to just look at two calls, remember, but. Across my, I was here, putting myself, you know, what, so. And then I, I just wanted, the, the big what if, you know, we always talk about the what if, we just lived through pandemic and actually the largest downturn of revenue as we look at it, you know, pro-rated across the years that the city's ever seen.
So appreciate this. Sorry.
It's fine. We, go ahead.
I just think it's like really helpful as a reminder. That was bonkers, what we just experienced and are still recovering from. Um, and what did it look like? Like, and I should know this, but what impact did it have on us? And we were also then changing the way we were running things and budgets and I mean that like all these things at one time. So like, how, how did that, and forgive me, Eric, if you've already said this. Like, how did that impact our general fund? So we survived the rainy day.
We survived the rainy day. Eric will probably state it better. We had an impact and it hurt. Obviously we had some layoffs. We really tightened the belt, so to speak. I think had we had a better handle on where we were across the board, whether we're talking deferred maintenance of facilities, um, keeping up with our vehicles, other things, reviewing healthcare, we're doing some other benefits. I don't think the impact would have been as bad, but because we did have a healthy reserve and our operations have been pretty satisfied for a while, the, the impact didn't hit us hard.
And federal aid. Yeah, federal aid did that too, so.
And I think that's a bigger question with the what if, like will that federal aid come next time? And, and you know, you talk about earthquakes. I mean, you know, we're due for one.
Salt Lake report, because they have earthquakes as a risk there too, right? And it's like, um, next month or next week.
Well, and the other thing that I think that the extreme events now is also cybersecurity. I mean, it's, again, it's at least how I look at it and like what I've read is like every business is bound to get hit at some point in its life tenure. Uh, and, and same thing with just the average citizen, I think. And the question is, well, how much does that cost?
So we, we face thousands of attack, attacks every day that get stopped. Some get slid through and it's our employees that become our frontline. But one wrong click and we're in ransomware where they're saying, we know you have thirteen million dollars in the bank. And you have insurance policy for two million. We want fifteen million to give you your data back and let you go a bunch of way. Should we be, this gets to the conversation about an on-premises server, you know, all those backups, where is that all happening? Uh, that's why we went to the government cloud in a way, uh, but all those steps that we need to make. But, but you're absolutely right because number one, a threat in terms of cybersecurity is ransomware for local government because they can lock us up and we gotta have this data. All your building permits, your occupancy, how, inspections and all that are, are locked in there, so. To answer your question in a, in a, in a different way, but also the same, we, into what we're talking about here. When we encountered COVID nineteen, I was not here, but looking back at the actions we took and you can see them in the budgets or the process and the values that are there. We really said that we're gonna keep the employees whole, right? We're gonna hang on and try to pull, pull people through for time. That's not a bad thing to do, but we had no plan on what we were gonna fund behind it, right? So this conversation now is, okay, so we're gonna encounter a hu, a tough time. Do we make a small adjustment and you don't keep all ninety, you know, don't keep all one hundred percent, but keep ninety-eight percent of your organization whole? And make some of that small trim affecting, envisioning that you might come up the other side, still with some danger zones. We really came out of the COVID zone into now a structural deficit issue because we, we kept everyone whole through that time. I mean, we used a lot of federal aid, CARES Act money, one point eight million, went right in the fire department to back out one point eight million to go, you know, help support parks and rec and public works and finding development staff and all the other staff. So that, that kind of conversation that I'm talking about, what are the triggers? What's that free planning look like? If you had, if that had been here before heading into the COVID pandemic, you would have been able to say, we're gonna take it down to ninety-eight percent of budget. Meaning our, let's pull our expenditures back. We're gonna cut two percent off. We, we will find that, management goes and finds that, and then what's that mean coming out of that? We're gonna hold that line so that we, we know we're a little nearer than we were before we got into this to see what the, the new world looks like coming out the other side.
And I, I, I think that was frankly the unwritten policy of Webster Grove because I think we did the exact same in the early financial crisis. We kept everyone whole, as they inject, right? And, and maybe that is what our policy should be. I'm not saying I'm manificating one way or the other right now, but I think that was probably the unwritten policy for a long time in this city.
And that's, again, back to our reserve conversations, reserved for what? Right? I mean, what's the policy behind this money that sits in this big, their big checking and investments, so. I will quickly move through this and we'll get into those discussion points. Uh, this is all important conversations, so I appreciate it. Again, comprehensive reserve policy, what we just talked about. Do you pre-commit to decisions about reserves? So you know what's going to happen before the emergency hits you, right? You know, and so Dr. Peoples and I, you know, we start to see sales tax dip, right? We're not waiting for a quarterly outcome, right? It's like, you know, we start to notice by council, there may be a trigger that's neat, you know? Sales tax took a twenty-five percent dip two months in a row. Now, that's a big number for Webster Grove that that happens. That's about eight point nine million dollars out of twenty-two is sales tax. Twenty-two million. So if that dips like that, what are we doing as management right away to step in on that? There is no policy. There's no direction yet. It's, it's wholly, you know, the manager could not do anything. Let the organization ride it out, right, and such. So again, what is the written policy? Try to have that pre-game, a, a pre-plan out there as well. And then, so why are we reserving? Why are we accumulating reserves, right? To the public? Why are we taxing you and holding on to your money rather than investing it back into the costs and goods and things that the, the public would die, desire to be operating? How much should be included? When do we have too much on hand? Right? And that's a thing, we have too much, because again, you're about the fundamental beauty of taxing to take that money out of, out of private citizens' hands, put it in the public's hands writ large to invest in public entities. What strategies do we use for accumulation? Again, how much are we investing? That's liquidity rates and such like that. How much are we trying to grow that with the principle that we put in? And then when and for what purpose do we use those revenues for? When do we take that out? Taking interest only? Are we, are we doing a big investment? Are we putting aside a housing trust fund? Are we creating the climate resilience fund? Is this how we're gonna fund it? You know, and such along the way. Those kinds of questions, which there's lots of things on the table, right? How do we catch up on buildings, you know, and if we, you know? If the assessment done, accessibility and the security comes back and says, this building really is gonna be tough to do. It's gonna take many millions of dollars. Is this building where City Hall operates? You know, I'm not saying City Hall is gonna move, but is that, you know, those kinds of conversations. That's what can, can we come out, come out of those conversations. And so that leads us then, I, what we put together as the tool, the conversation pieces for you tonight, I'll move all these little boxes out of the way. As best I can. So on the risk-based revenue analysis, it's, it's a model comprehensive tool with three different examples that I gave you in the GFOA materials and their, their conversation. That was actually a webinar they presented to finance staff. Uh, we, we've asked them and they've agreed to give us the videos. So Steve is in the process of getting it and we have that, we'll get that available to you all to watch the actual webinar. Uh, that, that finance staff sat through, uh, but the tools give us data. And so our considerations we're asking you to look at again is, if you're gonna have a policy, you generally either have a range or you have a fixed target. We right now have a fixed target. We want fifty percent, right? First of all, are we talking percentages? Are we talking a hold on? You can, we can have a hold on. Data is gonna inform this, but again, your comfort with what data guides you to and taking that to people and, and also encouraging people of Webster Grove to grow comfortable with it is important. If there is a range, what is that range? Is it? Well, I've seen some, some places that are eight to fourteen percent. Seen some places that literally are, our minimum floor is ten percent and we can dig up to eighty percent of the budget. But the point is they've written it down. People know then what that's for, right? If they've got a, a reason for why they want to hold there. Um, or fixed target number again, like our fifty percent. The minimum and the maximum, really what I'm talking about there are their triggers. Is there, when we reach a certain point, things happen, right? We've got too much money? Or do we come back and have a year-long conversation like this about what do we do with this money? Right? Or do we know we have access, access to surplus, some surplus funds? We're gonna start investing in this strategic plan initiative piece that was sort of over here without a direct revenue stream. We need to put some money behind it. Or this one's falling behind. We don't have enough money to get this project really going. How do we, how do we book? And then what are those triggers for accessing? So I have two slides here, but this is really about the, out of the risk-based analysis. What kind of, what does that data teach us and what's your comfort then with what that data will teach us? And that data is not gonna be here for at least nine months, folks. I mean, between all the things we have to do in finance and then put our time into this, it'll take some time, uh, barring bringing someone else on to do it or some outside help. But, but it's gonna, that's okay, because you still have value-based conversations that you're gonna be wanting to have on the, the opposite side of that. What are we gonna do with funds?
Yeah, that was my, my ask is so that big spreadsheet with all the tabs, we're playing, we, we, we're planning to do that in-house.
So.
That kind of assessment in-house.
So we started with that conversation and, and we could do it in-house. It's gonna take a long time, right? It's one of those that you, you get a good week at it and then, you know, the next big thing in finance comes up, we all come back to it. Do we look at bringing in an outside person in that role, in that space to do that? An outside firm or, you know, someone just on the employee side? I think that's all on the table from my perspective. There's a lot of things to do in finance. I don't expect to have an department of, you know, grow by three more people anytime soon. But this is really, I, I see this as a project. Once this kind of thing is built and operating and it's integral to our financial life, then it's one of those things that you're updating year over year over year.
Or do we have the expertise on staff now to build a model of this nature?
That, to build.
That don't soak up all their time.
Yeah, no, to build, no. I mean, that's why GFOA has been so helpful, right? I mean, these are models that are operating, that have gone through the, 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 the folks that you're, Steve presenting of these, Shane Kavanaugh especially. Is the brain at GFOA behind rethinking? And he, along with peers, academic, you know, papers and things like that, peer reviewed. Uh, have really put time and effort into this whole rethinking world that they're in. They, they really have said, these are good models, right? You know, it's, so they're giving us good models with a lot of rigor behind it to, to get real data, not just to have some big assumptions built in that you're like, but who decided that? You know what I mean? Down that rabbit hole that you go in. Um, so it's very much more actuarial. If we had to build it from old cloth, we do not have that on stand. But we, but that said, it's still, it's tough to operate. We're talking about a model that's not built in our system. So you're constantly going in to get data out, apply it in this model. It's not integral. It's very manual in that way, so.
Simply you just update that to a certain degree, our financial.
And every, every day we continue to update all those things that, so we were in a system called New World from Tyler. New World is now at end of life. So Tyler bought New World. It was a separate company. The Tyler Corporation bought it. Um, after we got into New World in two thousand and five, that's coming to end of life, which is part of this IT conversation because we're on-premises server. We are not in the cloud with our financial data. We're on-premises down in the basement. And so sooner or later Tyler will no longer allow on-premises servers. And they're not gonna also service the New World product, right? We certainly don't wanna be one of the last people on the boat, you know what I mean? As they're not helping us take care of it. It's already, we talk about payroll issues, you know, little errors here and there. Our patches have gotten so much easier. Why? Because Tyler's not pushing new stuff into the system, right? Because they're not updating that system anymore. So it's gotten easier already to maintain it, but that means sooner or later it's gonna get much harder because there's no fixes being built for things and it's, how do we move? So you're, that IT plan is really gonna say, how do we get to the cloud? And then we are probably two to four years away from ERP, uh, ERP transfer. We can stay in the Tyler world and go into their, their Tyler product original. It's called Munis or ERP Pro. Uh, so Dr. Peoples and I used in Arizona, uh, when we were there and other, other, many other places use it. We go out in the market, look at Oracle, we go get Workday, we can take our pick of ERPs, but it's, everything you've seen in New World, that sooner or later has to be brought into a new system. That's a whole two-year process. You usually build it, then you run a whole year in parallel of both systems to make sure you're getting all your financials recorded the right way.
We do have backup.
So we, we have backups. Yes, yes, we have backups, but the point being is that our backups are, you know, we, we rent some space in other places for backups, you know, and such, but, you know, we have a basement room downstairs with three air conditioners in it to really manage our evidence from police department and the Tyler financial system that we're on premises. It is a big bill to go up to the cloud. They, they know they got you going to the cloud, but it is where data is more secure, right? Because they have to apply a whole load of standards from SISA that we, uh, don't have to apply in such.
That's what we should build here.
It's a data farm?
Uh, no, I'm getting off the subject here a little bit, so, but the three air conditioners we got down. So is it a room, locker room or is it?
Well, it's finally proof of the fact that it is fully concrete. Um, I don't, it is not, it is not as secure as you were thinking of it, so. So it is, uh, it's literally located off the locker room for the police department. So theoretically you can have a water flow in issue there. Um, it is all concrete and I mean, those air conditioners blow out through some holes. We cut through concrete to get venting out. Um, so it is not the ideal room. This place was redesigned, was meant to be sort of right behind the front desk and what is the mailroom in that area? What is now planning development where the file room was?
Who are giving all the cybersecurity secrets away.
Well, from, from level one to ten, what exposure do we have with ten being the greatest? Yeah, yeah, for sure. And I can get that information back to us, you know?
So we're, 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 um, we have backups and so, but someone, it's not hard for someone to get to our room if they are not supposed to be there.
Yeah, and I guess that's, my question is, is it, are we protected? You know, if something like that's happened.
Yes, just a part of it's unsafe.
Working out.
Our apartment's right next door.
That's a good question.
No, no, I understand. So that's the type of risk analysis that you really need to think about. And that's part of this.
That happens. I think probably in conversation with you and maybe Dr. Peoples. You know, do we have a, a disaster recovery plan? What happens if this building go poof? Where do we go? Where, what do we do? Do you have?
We do have plans. We don't have a lot of good answers in those plans. I would say that yes, we need assistance doing this, uh, in between the three point five, three point seven staff in finance.
Three point seven.
Three point seven.
I would support that. I mean, looking at the reports that are here, looking at that spreadsheet, I mean, it's a lot, but you get a lot of good information. And I feel like we really need that information to be able to really address the questions.
And what better way to spend some of our reserve money to figure out how to spend some of our reserve?
It's so government.
The other question I can ask.
I'm just gonna say, aside from having the expertise, because I, do we have the capacity? Could we get it done? Yes. Would it be quick? Absolutely not. Um, but having.
Um, but having somebody with a different lens help us look at this and to tell us the hard truths, quite frankly, that we need to hear about some of this.
That helps us if we need to talk about it, the community too. So we mentioned that this has been kind of the same bucket of money for twenty years, right? So do we anticipate? That we have twelve million dollars, say that we need to. Work with, that we think that's going to go up and down in the future, or is it really like? We need to figure out what we need and we're going to set it, but really the amount isn't going to change that much sooner or because we're still dealing with the same bucket of money that we have.
I, I think in general, barring major volatility in the economy, you're going to deal with about the same amount of budget revenue that you're getting, right? That's the way the Hancock Amendment sort of kicks us in the behind, right? New construction, you're going to need some more property, property taxes, that, that helps. Um, sales tax, obviously if you add another sales tax, increase one of the taxes that's eligible to be a tax increase, that helps. But again, sales tax is going to dip as the economy dips and such, so you're going to have to build some triggers in. The other revenues are generally staying pretty, pretty, um, pretty constant across the way. Again, legislature, preemption, it's a big one, you know, sooner or later someone's going to say something about why do you have these ARB boards, why do you take the, why is the building permits this much, why do you do business licenses? Half, half the business license, businesses aren't, are exempt already, you know? Surprised that some of them haven't gone to the legislature since they get us all out of this, so. Um, so that again, exposure and those risks, um, but again, your costs are still, you're still in the people model. You know, we're always going to be a people model, Dr. Peoples is absolutely right, people are, people are the bedrock of government. Um, people are going to cost more and more and we're young in pension. Our costs at loggers are young, we are not, you know, an aged organization like St. Louis County trying to cover pension liabilities. We are a young organization in terms of paying the pension, so that liability balloon is out there. Waiting for us to, to bump into it someday, and so there are those conversations, we carry all this money forward, that's not going to be enough when we get there to. To meet all those needs and demands, so.
Is, is that required, our pensions, I mean, like. State law that we cover?
No, did they recover?
I know, yeah, we.
We, we were once in a, would be a five, let's say, non pension, but we're essentially a 401k version for government. We did have that, uh, we did not have pensions, uh, there was a original pension that's in the charter, you see that? Fired police were in that, some police were in that, not everyone, uh, that was slowly phased out, probably right about the time you came to council. Um, the, the verba they used to call it, uh, was phased out as we moved into loggers and really, you know, the two public safety services really pushed into getting into a, into the logger system. Uh, the logger system is a very good system, I want to be very clear, it's a very good system. But ultimately we're still young, I mean, I look at our actuarial reports and we have young years of service, we don't have a bunch, if some departments have four retirees. You know, we've been in the cities for, since eighteen ninety six, we have four retirees drawing a pension benefit, so we are. We have, we're new to that world and that means that those experiences that governments have with, you know, pension load. From thirty years ago that you're paying off now, that's going to come to us at some point in the future. I will not have to deal with that right crisis, you will not have to deal with it, but how do we best leave our successors with some semblance of a pathway for them?
I just know some organizations, not necessarily city governments, but they're getting rid of their pensions. And becoming self-funding in with their 401ks.
Most, most, most private sector agencies are certainly out of pensions, that's guaranteed, public sector is still very strong in pensions. Uh, we can leave a pension, but those who are vested have a right to continue, so once, once you're in invested. Even though we may say we're done with a pension, those that have reached five years and are vested in loggers, we would have to continue that pension payment for them.
About law, we're required to maintain that at a certain balance?
I don't know by law.
So by logger, by logger systems, loggers require this, but not, not law, not law.
Contractually though, for departments that have collective bargaining agreements, we're in it.
Yeah, yeah. And then, uh, moving on, we've talked about a lot of these questions, but these are the four big ones about your values. And where do we put money behind our, our values and such, uh, on a reserve policy, we're talking about. What's that free guidance that we're looking for, we're going to have a large amount of reserves that aren't going to be necessary to cover risk. That's, that's a likely statement I'm making there, it's very likely, I mean, I put ninety nine point nine percent truth behind that, but that was caveat that. Data could come up, we have big exposure somewhere we don't know about. But again, so if you're going to have millions potentially, what are those, what are those programs and spending areas are your priorities? What are the priorities, you know, is it the things in the strategic planner, are there things not covered in that? Um, what are your personal greatest hopes and fears, what keeps you awake at night about the city, you know, is it? Is it cybersecurity, is that really, you know, causing, is that an angst and is that angst something that we should put money towards, you know, that's a great way to start a policy conversation. What can we plan and what can we manage for, right? I mean, there's some things we can't plan and manage for, so how do we pre-book, pre-guidance on it? We know how to plan for an ERP transition, how to plan for, we're going to have a cybersecurity attack, here's how we're going to respond and such like that. We can't plan for, we can find for what we do with an earthquake, we can't say the earthquake is going to come here and make our budget. Projections all look pretty the way we want it to, it's going to come in the year when we don't want it to happen, right? You know, Candlestick Park, you know, the eighty nine World Series earthquake in San Francisco wasn't planned, right? I was. You know, you're talking about the fifty three Mother's Day tornado and up in Wisconsin too, so, um, and then. I think out of this conversation, you know, we had. Dr. Peoples, I think the words would be, it's a struggle to get this meeting scheduled and sort of put together. But what's your, what's your goals and desires, like when do you want to bring this back and talk about it again? If we, if we're just having an esoteric policy conversation, is this something you want to meet every month or is this wait for data to get back?
I feel like we need the data and I feel like we need the. Priorities, tasks, we know that conversation to see what buckets we need to, I don't know.
But there are questions that, that we can't answer now, you know, what, in the event that we do, whatever we do with the comprehensive reserve policy. And those funds that we set us, think we're going to set aside, what are we going to do with them? Because if we don't name it, somebody is going to try to claim it, you know, and it won't be for any type of significant things. Thing that we want to accomplish like that.
Explain what you're saying, Mr. I'm a little confused, I'm sorry.
Well, let's say, for example, we have the, uh, the reserve, we create a policy saying, well, all we need is X amount of dollars. Or any that we want to call it, then now, two, three, four, five million, we might even come a bill. What parameters we want to put against that, so. That we can't say, well, let's go ahead and put a nice flower garden down here on this, you know, we get to make sure there's something that the entire community. City Webster Groves is going to benefit off of it. You know, like the street repair, or if it's something that happens, uh, emergency. Remember the, uh, the flood? Everybody, or by council, their flood insurance, but they want the city to build a map, you know, that kind of something that happened. But we do need to set parameters on that. Money, so we know what it's going to be used for and how it's going to be used for the benefit of the city. Give that money back to the community, uh, I think you made a comment. Thank you, Bob, to, to, so they can see the efforts of their taxman.
I feel like whatever, i- if we were to change any policy, it has to be staggered. In other words, I don't think we can say we're going to go from fifty percent to ten percent overnight. I think it's got to be done over the course of multiple years. In order for people to feel comfortable, in order for us to prove that it is okay to do. And then it also allows for the money to be spent, uh, if any money is spent, to be spent. Over the course of multiple years rather than all at once.
Very common.
Yeah, yeah, you can have it all, maybe five, seven year period.
Exactly.
And see how we use this money this year and then. But to it, yeah.
Yeah.
There's money, people will spend it. Then we don't have money, how come you don't?
Well, there's our comprehensive plan process that we're going through, um. You know, that will identify some. You know, goals, help us identify some goals and, and. Um, and how we would want to. You know, utilize some of these funds to achieve some of those goals.
But. Do we want to wait until the results of the comprehensive plan come back to the process?
Well, I think this is a very fast process anyway.
Not fast, but maybe some type of a policy might get, put us on the path. Policy they might review every year and make changes, modifications to improve it.
Yeah, I'm not saying like, let's not do anything right now, what I'm saying is like down the line, I think that will. Be, we're lucky to be able to have those points to reference in addressing. How is that money, you know, the massive community engagement that was the first leg of this, this will be very informative for us.
But you don't want it to happen. You'll be here, I'll be here. And if, if David's going to run again, you might be gone. And so this, who's next up, Pam and the mayor, I mean, they, they might, but we want to create something that's going to move and counsel the council, the council. Where it will be difficult for them to change and to, uh, put them, explain why they're doing it. Otherwise.
Yeah, don't disagree that we, you know, this is, we need to be having this conversation of how much is. An okay amount of money is key, yeah, on reserves and then determine what to do with it.
I think that'll be a full complement thing, right, that will be a.
Oh, no, I guess I don't want to sit and wait for a comprehensive plan because we did it next year would be lucky.
Did they can be done contemporaneously, right? I agree with you, but I was wondering like, is the first thing that maybe to assist in this would be. Let's find a, a third party consultant to assist. Would that be the first step here?
It's too bold, I think we need that third party and whether we are a feed or a consulting source, they're. We can figure that out, so I, I think that happens simultaneously with the prioritization conversation.
With the council.
With council, oh yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, we're just looking for the council to do.
I am, um, and even if it's not strictly defined, how much dollars do you want to put to X, Y, Z? Really understanding what those priorities are yet, doing some really serious ranking and, and sticking to it, uh, because we've had. We've had quite a bit of mission creep, I think, from the strategic plan, and that's not necessarily a negative thing, we've done a lot of important things. But as we're really prioritizing, that will help me then to be able to go back, work with teams, work with finance. What are the costs going to be? What are the staff costs associated with it? Because any of the priorities you all come up with come with additional staff and you probably talk, you know, through budget and other times. We're a much leaner team than we were, some of that is because we just can't fill positions, you know, I think we're still down ten police officers, we're trying as much as we can. So we're lean and any work that we do or priorities that come about, we also have to have the capital and human resources to put in that, which comes with a cost. And even without being, Eric, I'm going to call on you for some, some numbers, even without those positions, you know, we froze and we withheld as we were going through. And I think we're still down fourteen of those positions, it's fourteen, right? Fourteen of those positions and so, but the work has not increased.
Yeah.
If anything, it's increased.
Which kind of supports your approach of, of spreading this out over several years, because we'll need to do that for staff time too, we can't do it all in a year or two.
My, my biggest concern with that is, say, is without a dollar value, it's hard to figure out what my priorities may be. Cause if I have six million dollars to spend or to figure out what should be prioritized, that's different than two million dollars in my mind. So I, I think we can do that from a high level maybe, but it's going to be, I think, difficult for me to say. This is my priority based off of this without knowing numbers, so.
I agree, I, I agree fully, I think it could be. More philosophical or chicken or egg, when I'm thinking about it, I've got some real big things in my mind, I hear from probably half the council that stormwater is a top priority. It's incredibly important across the city, I fully agree, uh, but some of the. Sustainability things, composting is on my mind, um, some of the activities that we're do, all good things. Things that we're doing in the business districts is supporting the business districts, you know, a top priority. Having just some of that will help, I think, us narrow it down.
I see what you're saying, yeah, so like, you know, you know, this council's talked a lot about affordable housing, we talked about walkability. And so it's like, even if, i- it's like, uh. Structuring how we spend the money around those ideas, it's not necessarily what the project is.
Yeah, right, yeah, so I, like, in my mind, I've got like three buckets, we've got that, you know, prioritizing areas of. Priority, um, doing the project to find out what the numbers are, what the recommendations are, getting that third party into doing the reports like we have. Um, from, it's not like in others. And then the, the policy itself and these kind of questions of like, do we do? We do a range, what are the triggers, what do we, you know, what happens, so kind of like those three pieces of it. As far as like meaning again, I feel like we can, for me, like, I feel like I can't really do much more until we kind of start down the road getting that analysis.
Analysis, uh.
Our, our.
Risks, we have new risks. Is that something that council deals?
Sure, no, no, I think that's the GF way model, right, as a matter of us, as we talked about capacity internally and. There are people that we can, we, again, we can do RFP, we can soul source, we can figure out people to bring to that conversation. That will speed that conversation, the speed of ordering up and such, uh, again, don't think of these those one time, right? Because every year they, they analyze that, what, what is the weather pattern stuff, what is the, what's the actuarial risk behind the earthquake? If it didn't happen this year, what does that mean for ten years out, right? Um, if you're in wildfire country, if you didn't burn this year, are you going to burn next year, you know, things like that. Um, so these are not just one time moments that happen, they're going to give us that sense in the beginning. That's why this whole policy is on a triennial review, every three years we're talking about this very basic thing, are we still within our ranges and where we need to be? Uh, on, on, on having a reserve and what, and for what purpose?
I can give my thoughts on that, I think we should do triennial to be in line with all the other policies. So you need like.
Thank you, we got one, we got one there.
One opinion on one thing.
And it's, you know, we, let's be clear, for twelve years we didn't look at this policy, other than the conversation, whatever happened at budget, but it was not done a review of it and so. Sort of luckily timed in with where GF was at to give us some resources that we didn't have to come up with this ourselves, right? We didn't have to pull actuarials in, we were able to look at what other cities are doing, what other folks in the finance world are, are suggesting, that, you know, gives us some guidance here.
And I think this document also will help with, I know what are your priorities, which is this emergency preparedness and plans. So much of that risk assessment speaks to what are the real risks that we let people look at, and I thought it was interesting that the different. Cities had different areas of risks for that. Uh, we need to get like the one in Napa Valley where their good risk was their, their transient occupancy.
Right.
Times or.
Just think where we will be if back when we wasn't, when they sold the water company in two thousand and one, two and two somewhere there. Didn't have this bucket of money to fall on our lap. If we didn't have that bucket of money. We're probably much, much smaller than we were before. Cause we never had, we didn't have that. Twelve million will be back in our mind as the safety net. It, it just, we, I don't think we would have been able to grow that type of pool of money in this city.
And that goes to the not just basing us based on what the numbers say, but what the values are and like what we feel is right, because we might. What if the numbers say twelve, but we're like, if we had twelve, we wouldn't be willing to like risk this or that and need twenty or like five.
It is interesting though, when you talk about values, right, like. I mean, we've had that for twenty years, you know, no one really is run or no one, you don't see a swell in the community that we want this money spent immediately on some product. So I, I do think that even though that money kind of, in that didn't fall in our lap, but like that money's there. The community feels protected with that money there, so a decent chunk of change seems to me that having that there is a value in this community.
Oh, I do, but I, I guess I was really questioning how many of our community members know that bucket of money is there.
I, well, I want you to explain it, how we're explaining it now, you know, well, how would that value change? I agree with what you're saying.
And that's, and that's the importance of that policy, this is how we're going to handle this violence from the Capitol.
Whatever the number is of people who know that it's there, it's going up because we're having meetings like this. Which is a good, which is a good thing.
The goal setting meeting is scheduled for the next council meeting. Okay, we'll have to cancel calendar to see, so that conversation will be clear.
I'll get my piano store brightened.
I do think this, and I know it's down the road, you're talking about money, right? And you, David, you talked about what amount, right? And even if you take, in my mind, you take the graduated, if I take seven years, I'll say we, twenty five percent is where we all arrive at, right? Between values and data, we own twenty five percent. You're going to end up with eight to nine million dollars, you know, the investment to make. Where does that do the best work, right? And now. God bless all city councils and all councils I've ever worked for and boards, but we have seven members and I can see seven priorities come out, right? Do you then effectively scale anything that is meaningful? To the community with that money, even on that, if you have, you know, how many, how many priorities can you really scale up? That's the other thing we don't think about often is scaling. That's the other thing we don't think about often is scaling, right? We've, we've made some really, uh, bold, I must say, but we took some steps like during, um, we did work in Webster groups, you know, very simple job board for businesses during COVID. But it's not scaled, right? We didn't put years of mul- of brand advertising in behind that to make it the indeed of what we talked about here, right? It was, we'll meet the need now, it's a product that's there, we'll always have this job board. But scaling up, we don't do a lot of that. We need a need in the moment, but we don't scale it up to how to affect the community outcomes longer and further down.
Want to kind of piggyback off of that, right? Like, this probably goes back to, to risk analysis, but like, how much of this can we buy? You know, like, like you say, we wanna build a new city hall.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that seems to me not money that we would use from our reserve, we would just go out to the citizens for a bond issue. And same thing with maybe some of the green energy stuff. I think that a lot of that stuff is, and, and even the strong water stuff, I think, I think all that kind of stuff is potentially more, more appropriate for bond related stuff.
We have, we have a lot of space. If you're gonna be in bonding, there's a lot of costs that can be bonded. And we have certainly a lot of capacity, even as I reported on the tax rates, you know, seven cents on the dollar. That's a, that's a little chunk of bond, you know, that you could probably, just totally guessing, you could probably roll another six million dollar bond out right now, under that tax rate, but if we were at that tax rate, the, the maximum we're allowed at across the years, without increasing that tax rate, the maximum.
Just being honest, you know. The Robert Dr. Peoples in there, you know, we've gotten quite a few chunks of grants.
Yeah.
You know, not, not a hundred thousand, we'd be talking about millions to go back into the city. So that's, that's, that's big and there's money, I think I got an email one day last week, I think, uh, they just opened up four forty million and, um, or, or like does that stop, does that recover, but, but waste, waste management or something like that?
We've took pretty few grants in the hot door right now as well, so.
Yeah.
And that's another.
That speaks to the finance, wherever I was going, finance infrastructure, that's a whole other mod, module that we have to sort of build on. Exactly.
There is, there is a cost to some of the grants too.
That's what I think, like, this is interesting, right? Like, so, uh, however mu- many millions of dollars we have to spend, I mean, we're not like building a land burnage over forty-four, which is my dream.
Yeah.
Uh, with that, but you know, what, what can we be doing foundationally, both like as for tax base? And then also capacity here, that's an investment.
Yes, and we're leveraging dollars we have quite a bit, I mean, through the grants, which is great time right now to do that, but there are match costs. And there's ongoing costs to that, if we wanna continue whatever those activities are. There's very few brains that will just build your infrastructure and let you walk away, right, in their programs. But we're still going after several, um, and you all will continue to hear me talk about infrastructure as we have these conversations. I think the IT plan that Eric already talked about, switching to the cloud, switching our ERP system. Uh, but we still have a lot of deferred building needs. And we, we've got to, in my mind, to take care of some of the first things first and how we manage to do that.
And one of, one of the things I was asking about, about like how much this fluctuates is really, we kind of have to think about whatever we pull out of the fund balance to spend as one time money, like.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. So we have to be careful about like using it for costs that are gonna continue after we've spent, or however much it is. So the deferred maintenance, things like that, things that can help our tax base.
It's a circular conversation. We're back where we started. How do we increase revenues?
And you know, and that money we have invested, that's the, that was left into the reserve, they're gonna earn money, or they let that stay in there? They would draw it out every five years, do something.
I mean, it's already an interest now.
It does earn interest now, I think, you know, obviously because of our rightful investment policies, we, we maximize safety, so. When n- numbers are gonna fall here in this quarter probably, you know, we haven't, haven't gone to bond yet because we're waiting just for that one more month. Can we, if we drop, can, we're gonna say millions, wait for that one Frederick, Frederick change, right? I'm turning on those bonds. So just by waiting, and there, there's another benefit. We hold a big chunk of cash there that I can obligate for the pool now and backfill with the bonds by saving millions in interest, you know what I mean? By waiting a month and such. So, um, you know, that's, that's a nice, a nice feature of having all that cash, but there are, to your point. You put investments in, create grant, a grant match trust fund, you can create a trust fund within your own city. This is for grant matching. We're setting aside a million dollars. And that million dollars is now gonna keep growing, it keeps growing, it keeps growing, it keeps growing, and that's where we're gonna pull match off.
Yes, I agree with that, yeah.
You know, um, we talked about if you are interested in and if the council truly does want a, a charitable organization on the outside, right? There's one time money that you're saying, we're gonna seed, this is going back to our community, and we're gonna put money into that, that's a possibility. Um, there's all sorts of different ways to, to go about using that, but again, that's priorities and what's the values and internally, what do we need? And then what is our community? Where do we put the money they invested for years in the water program? Or do we take that to work for them? You know, so always.
Both those things though do require, uh, staff, right? Like ongoing staff resources, right?
So that's the thing that concerned me.
I'm sorry, I'm just thinking through this. I, I love the idea of using this money that will effectively pay for itself, like something that's gonna continue like commercially or something, a venue, I don't know. But when I think about the trust or when I think about the, uh, uh, the charitable, just seems to me, just to me.
I can't have yourself.
Charitable stuff can be certainly, yes. I think the grant trust fund and, don't think of trust fund like a charitable organization when it's an internal, cause it's under our investment policy. So I'm talking about our own dedicated grant fund, the trust fund, I'm going to trust fund.
But then we have to figure out what are the policies and procedures in order to spend that, uh.
Right, and that's, we need to write a grant policy in it. I mean, we're, we're coming into, exactly, that's right. We're coming into that right now, so I mean, what, how do we deal with grants? Cause in, for years, it's been a couple hundred thousand dollars of grants, mostly in police.
Well, we are struggling with that, I think that's a fair word, especially for the federal grants that we're getting. And we've got a terrific three point seven finance team, but they do not have the capacity or the expertise system at federal grants. That we're writing the brands, using our, our grant match company, but they don't, there's a lot of reporting. And we want to make sure that we're reporting appropriately, keeping up with it, doing all the vendor verifications, things that we need to, so. Staff capacity beyond not having enough staff, what, and whether, it's not even necessarily a number of staff, it's having staff with the skill sets that we need to continue in some things that we're doing. You know, if we're gonna continue talking about sustainability, do we really invest in a staff person that has that sustainability background? Is able to go do various inventories? I mean, we're doing great, I hope it keeps your sustainability champion. And we're doing great to have this first sustainability position, um, but we've pulled it together. How do we make it meaningful going forward?
And, and I, that is spot on, I think, with every industry.
Yep.
Uh, right? Like in the idea of like the changing workforce, it's literally a workforce that is changing. For the people that used to, you know, pave the streets, you're not hiring those people anymore, you're hiring someone who knows how to uh, fix the machine that paves the street. And it's like, that, I thi- I think it's so important to think of that and also, also to, to educate the public about that too. Because I think that's a huge shift in mentality of what government does.
Huge shift, and we've got some large position changes coming and we'll sit in a full budget discussion, but even along those lines, you know, our, our maintenance workers. And we've got terrific team members, uh, but you know, our, our maintenance workers that were used to working on some of our old school cars, what are they doing with the vehicles? Even when we start talking about the hybrids, and so we've got to pivot and how are we either training them to invest in them? Or are we outsourcing it? There's, there's just a lot of conversations.
Yeah, excellent. Uh, but, uh, example of that, two, couple, two, three years ago, I guess, when I first came to council, I was screaming about the path. Locking path around River Rocket Park, where there's cracks, you know, we can't do it because it's too expensive, you know? What? You know, and somebody came and tapped me on the shoulder and said, Emerson, we can do that, all we have to do is buy the concrete. It was done in-house, you know, but everyone was used to just putting all that, we had the people in the house, the talent, but we wouldn't use it.
I'd love to invest more in our, in house staff, we're doing our own, uh, CBL training program now, which is great. We have fun people to train, but yes, we're doing it, we can find them, so, yeah, there's, but it takes time, yeah.
I think we'll have a path.
We are, we are, we've had a lot of great things happen.
Did you say you think the best that the balance in the reserve should be?
Me? I'm not gonna deny that.
Ben has the note.
No.
This is you all's.
Yeah, already said.
I don't know, I'm just saying my number's winning because of you.
Are you bald? Eric will bring recommendations. We really wanna hear the conversation from you all. Um, and I think next council meeting will help a lot with that prioritization or goal setting, whatever it is we're calling it, prioritization.
And honestly, we need to stay away from those feeling decisions versus data driven.
But it's always gonna be both, yeah.
I know, but we need to stay away from it. I know, I, it might not make, you know, I, I.
Can't be all of it.
Affordable, unattainable housing, that's, that's one of my pet peeves, James's sustainability.
I'm also with you on housing.
You know, but, you know, we might not even do it all.
Oh, yeah.
You know, might even do some, but not all, you know.
And then idea of not fracturing things seven different ways, but keeping something as a council.
What, what do you actually do that makes that impact?
That's gonna be the greatest impact.
Suss the priorities.
I, but I think emotions and feelings are so important, because what our job is, is to make people's lives simpler, better, easier. And so so much times, data doesn't drive that.
No.
And, uh, data, it is important, don't get me wrong, I, I am a big fan of data.
Data informed.
The data informed, yeah, but I, you know, I think that when I'm a governmental, especially the local level. You know, if, if a planter on the side of the street is gonna make community better, even though it costs money to have someone go and water it every day, sometimes that's what you do.
Yeah.
It's the, it's the vibes.
Yeah.
These are the bond decisions.
One day the van politics there.
That, that's a, that's a, that's a valid point, yeah, it's just a different kind of data.
Absolutely. You're saying our goal setting meeting is the seventeenth, is May, okay? And that is, we have, is, and is this going to be with the strateg- understanding where we are in the strategic plan and the tactics and when's that?
Hopefully.
Okay, fabulous.
Going to be some of that, I'm not sure how much of a deep dive, but yeah, pulling it together, but yes, there will be some.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and we've moved ahead on the strategic plan, I mean, believe it or not, there's so much that has been, there is, there's so much that's been done, especially on staff, I don't want to talk about staff side, right? Yeah, I don't know how much of council is fun.
I mean, we, we do some stuff too, but, um, it's being done on the staff side.
Right, it's kind of like when you're putting tons of money, you're, I don't know, if you're earnest, it's not much fun, because it's things you don't see.
It's sexy ways to spend money.
It, it is, but staff have been doing some amazing things, and not all of it's flashy. Uh, but whether it's our hiring practices, whether it's just internal skills and team building, that we really are doing some great things, yeah. I've done my stuff.
We have seventy-seven million dollars of assets, the biggest one's not flashy at all. Road will drive on, it's the biggest set of asset we have, other than people, so when you look at our balance sheet, that's the biggest asset we own is payment. It's unfortunate, but it's the biggest asset we own.
In terms of scheduling, I think I will wait to pound you all with more doodle holes until after the goal setting meeting. My councilman Franklin stepped out.
He's, he'll be back.
Oh, it was incredibly hard to schedule, and if you'll remember during the budget season, we all did wanna have these additional work sessions, which is fine, it would help me to know how often we're talking about having these at times of day with our best, on whether it's evening day, we'll make ourselves available, but that once a month, every other month, so I'll ask some of those questions as we move forward.
Or the third party piece of it, is that something that the council needs to approve, or is that something that you already have what you need for?
No, we'll move forward and see what kind of costs we can do, and it may be able to sole source it, depending on costs that would come back to council. Obviously, we'll discuss the process, but I'm not, I honestly don't know. I don't know if that's a five thousand dollar thing, a twenty thousand dollar thing.
We're gonna take it up every night.
I think so, I.
I mean, I'm, I mean, both, pretty, I'm just curious on the process.
I think you should like, when you have a staff member in a work session, say, and when are we meeting? And schedule it that way instead of trying to chase this down with a doodle pole. It's so much.
To be a doodle pole for this.
Oh, man.
Yes.
You did.
It was rough.
I don't think I can use that, you know.
You should have been. Let's talk about that.
When, and that's the case, just ignore me.
Well, you know, we do scheduling it and then whoever is available.
Yeah, that's how I like to think of it.
But I understand too, two, three, four years. We even use self-commits to get stuff done.
Yeah, those first couple of years, I, yeah, they, we didn't really have self-commits.
Didn't get done on the first and the third, went to the next first and third, and finally went to get it done.
Well, this is great. When you all made your decision to do this, it was clear that not everybody would be present, so having four here is a win.
And, and like, the great thing is it's recorded.
Yeah.
I mean, if I miss tonight, I can go back and then I can put my two cents in, or whatever that's worth, you know, later on.
Maybe a little less, yeah.
Yeah, one and a half cents.
I don't have that much else to say.
Well, thank you guys, this is the most.
No, thank you. It's been very helpful. It's, it's an anxiety, like I, like I said, it's an anxiety driven conversation sometimes, but it's extremely important.
It's always exciting.
Yeah.
Sometimes excitingness.
Yeah, exactly.
It has, yeah.
Well, it's just contributing to the infrastructure for future years.
Yeah, yeah.
Some future councils, yeah.
What I think, for, especially the past couple of years, when we talked about the idea of where our budget is and everything like that, to be able to tell the public now that we're thinking about investing into the community with their tax carry money that goes along with this.
But they are.
That they've already paid.
Yeah, we're not knocking on your door again.
And then, you know, they come in, they've made, and we made, you know, if it's something they wanna do with sewer, money, okay, put out a special tax bill, you get it done, you get it done correctly. Instead of fixing it on, on this street furnace, the den on this street, just have a plan and get it done.
I think we're gonna be dealing with flooding issue, the remainder of both of our lives.
Well.
I suspect when we get the stormwater master plan back, that we could spend all of the reserve on the stormwater master.
That's been some problem.
Four times over.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's like a little wink.
Yeah, I think we, we took, took a bunch of farmland in the forties and fifties and said, oh yeah, we'll run the water down that gully and, you know, maybe channelize it. And, but we don't, obviously don't have a lot of storm drains in some places.
Well, it's kind of like even with Brentwood Bow, I mean, that with their construction there probably caused us some flooding issues too. That's exactly what we're gonna continue to do when county does it.
And you don't care.
You don't care.
I don't care.
Somebody need to save our journey.
Yeah, that's you.
I would love to see MSC just stand, just putting that up.
Thank you.
All right, so you're working.
On adjourned.